Twenty first, 2025 meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hennan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Blani. Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hennan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the meeting where you can present your thoughts on items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Please direct your comments to the chair. You will have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart.
Cindy Kuhn, resident of Berkeley for 39 years and a business owner for now going on 19 years. I volunteered a little bit here in the city. And I come asking the council tonight, it's about the holiday parade. We've come, we've been meeting, and I want to just let you know the fees that, okay, the cost that the parade costs us right now, without the city's fees, is approximately $6,000 to $8,000. With the city fees on top of that, we're talking over $10,000 now. And this is the first time, this is our 21st year, and I have been the chairman for 21 years. And Crystal, tonight, came to me, we wanted a breakdown of the fees that we were being charged. Because, to be honest with you, I received a bill to the wrong group for way more than what we had even agreed upon. Then I received another bill, and that was incorrect. And then we got another bill, and that was even lower. And so we've paid that in full. And the sad part is, is that we do not have enough money. This is the first year ever in 21 years that we do not have enough money to even commit to any marching bands. Because we have to pay for all of their travel. And we have met with city officials on this. They have told us that their hands are tied, that you guys make the decisions. And I guess I'm just looking for, I'd love to sit down with all of you, meet with you, our group. We are 100% resident volunteers, always have been. We took this over from the Berkeley Men's Club. It was never a city parade, it was the men's club. So we would love to have a meeting with you to possibly iron out some of these costs. We are working on sponsorships. We are this close to a 501(c)(3). We've had some very great gracious help with that. And just wanted to take this time to see if you guys would meet with us, and so that maybe we can make this event. It's a great event, so we'd like to see it continue from that end. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, July 7, 2025, and the special city council meeting on Monday, July 7, 2025. Two, warrant list. Matter of approving warrant list number 1412. Three, motion number M5525. Matter of approving the mayor and city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for lockup services, animal control services, use of the Berkeley DPS range, and dispatch services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Huntington Woods for a $6,500 fixed yearly fee for each full-time equivalent, reflected in the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. Fall semi-annual law enforcement distribution report for the Huntington Woods Department of Public Safety. This agreement shall be effective for a term commencing on July 1, 2025, continuing until June 30, 2029. Four, motion number M5625. Motion to approve the purchase of a Polaris emergency utility task vehicle to include emergency lights and siren for $39,653.80 for the Department of Public Safety from Polaris Sales, Inc., Medina, Minnesota, 55340, from the vehicle's account 101-345-985-000. This purchase will utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract 091024-PSI. Five, motion number M5725. Matter of approving the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-150 Super Crew 4x4 Police Responder Pickup for $49,273 for the Department of Public Safety from Longhammer Ford, 1960 East Main Street, Owasso, Michigan, 48867, from the vehicle's account 101-345-985-000. This purchase will utilize the State of Michigan 2400001208 Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
Well done, Ms. Mitchell. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Hennan with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any corrections? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hennan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, please read item number two.
Motion number M5825. Matter of approving the purchase of a Rosenbauer Commander chassis with a pumper body with included dealer-supplied items for the Department of Public Safety from Frontline Services, Inc., 8588 Carter Road, Freeland, Michigan, 48623, at a cost of $1.17 million for the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract 113021-RSD from the Public Improvements Fund 445-901-985-000. Of this $1.17 million, $540,000 is to be paid upon delivery of the chassis to the Rosenbauer plant in fiscal year 2627, and the balance of the $630,000 to be paid upon delivery fiscal year 2728.
Is there a motion to approve M5825?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Hennan. Ms. Van Vleek.
Good evening. I'm going to pass this over to our extraordinary Director of Public Safety, Chief Kane.
Chief.
And I believe Lieutenant Corey Miller at some point.
Yes, he will be assisting me. Good evening, everyone. As you saw in the agenda item, this is for replacement of our current Engine 4. Current Engine 4 is a 2007 Spartan Darley fire engine. We'll get into specifics on what we're looking to replace it with. I'll have Corey's help on that. Engine 4 is our primary response vehicle. It's our biggest toolbox. We have our jaws of life on there. We have the most equipment. The tower is kind of a specialized, it's still an engine, but it's kind of specialized, obviously, for aerial. Our squad is a little bit smaller, but the engine goes to everything. It was out at least once today on a fire. So we've had some, it's almost 20 years old. NFPA recommends taking it off frontline status at over 20 years. We've had some issues with it. We take care of our equipment very well. It's still, for an 18-year-old truck, it's still in pretty good shape, but, you know, it caught on fire. I think in the packet, you'll see some photos of it on fire from our tower camera, and some pictures afterwards. So it was repaired from that. It carries, it destroyed the onboard generators. We have no generator in that truck right now, which all the other ones do, just because of the cost to replace it. And because of that, we can't use the foam system on it. Like I said, besides putting out fires, it carries our specialty equipment, it carries our high-rise pack for fires at high-rises. It carries our fire blanket, stabilization equipment, jaws of life. And it's vital to our response time and our response ability. Due to the age of the apparatus, the mileage, and the hours, and the equipment and components, the maintenance cost is climbing every year or two, because as we know, nothing's inexpensive on big piece of equipment like that. There is a chance that our existing Engine 4 may have some market value. We believe we know of at least one department, they may be interested in it. Don't know how much we can get for it, but I think there is a value for that. We're hoping to get maybe even six figures. No guarantee, but maybe even $100,000 for it. As far as the new engine goes, we formed a committee. We have quite a few fire experts, which is led by Corey. And we looked at a bunch of different, let me back up. Both of our apparatus right now, the tower and the squad, are both Rosenbauer. So we did, we did look at Rosenbauer with probably a little more focus. They have the same apparatus for all three, same company for all three apparatus. And we looked at other ones also, but Rosenbauer was the one that our committee selected. It's not, it's not the Cadillac of fire apparatus, but he's also not the Yugo of fire apparatus, so.
That's good.
I think it's kind of, it's good quality. It's not the cheapest we can get, but it's not the most expensive we can get. So we think it's the best use for our money. The purchase was reviewed by the Finance Department and the city attorney. Like I said, we considered several other mixed venues, engines, but Rosenbauer is definitely our choice. Engine 4 will be built in the United States. It's built in South Dakota. However, some of the parts come from out of the country. It is a German name, but it's an American company or is it a German company? It is an American company, thank you. This is not something we just, like I said, a couple of weeks ago, hey, maybe we should buy one. We've been budgeting this for several years. I remember, I think the first time we put this in the CIP, we budgeted about $600,000. And with the price of everything going up, it's increased substantially. You know, we looked at, just like the tower, we, I'm kind of a gadget guy, kind of like the toys, I'm not going to lie. Corey's the voice of reason, so we kept it to what we need. We need, we need an engine that will last us minimum 20 years, hopefully longer, because then it could be taken in reserve status. So we're looking for a long-term purchase. If you don't buy something now, if you don't add something now, to add it later is either impossible or a lot more money. So there are no bells and whistles on it, on the engine, but we double-checked, there is a horn and a siren.
Thank goodness.
Actually wrote that down, so I didn't mess it up. And like I said, the price of everything's going up. This is, we were able to lock in in May. This price is locked in, so we do have this price. A little bit of flexibility in the tariffs. And also, there is some, I'm not going to call them contingency funds, but if we find some of our equipment on the current engine does not fit on the new one, then we have some money to make some modifications and/or buy some smaller piece of equipment to add to the truck. As far as the gallons-per-minute pump, the tank is the same, slightly smaller. And any other tech specs, any other tech specs, technical specs you want to, I know Jack's not here.
I know, I know.
Prepared for the chassis, for the axles. No, so it's a 750-gallon tank. Our current one is a 1,000 gallons. We purchased that truck as a demo back in 2006, 2007. So it wasn't something that Berkeley specked at the time. They just had the opportunity to purchase a truck that was already built. We have a fire hydrant every 300 feet, so we have 1,000-foot of hose to get to that hydrant. So I feel that 500 or above is a good choice. The ladder trucks are at a 500-gallon tank, the squad's at 750-gallon tank. This also has foam on it as well to suppress fire. Future forecasting, we wanted enough room for potential future of equipment over the next 20, 25 years will change, obviously. So we'll still have some extra space for whatever kind of changes with the fire service. The unfortunate part is the cost of fire equipment, fire turnout gear, all that has gone up so much that it's difficult. It's replacing a truck that was about $342,000. So that's the, the times have changed in 20 years, that's how much the cost has gone up.
And will continue to do so. I mean, the longer we wait, this is, will be exponentially more. And I, in reading the packet, I know we've talked about this before, it's a good two years to even build.
Yep, the chassis, if they start today, the chassis will take about 18 months to be delivered to South Dakota from their other, their other plant. And then it's anticipated about a year, year and a half, give or take, for the final build-out of that, until we take delivery.
And what's happening, like a lot of the tech companies, is the companies are buying each other. So there's a little bit less competition, and, you know, I know there's talk of investigation in Washington. Maybe, I don't, I don't want to use the term collusion, but the way the price of just, it's incredible. I mean, this truck will cost us almost $200,000 more than the tower did just a few years ago.
Kind of the deciding factor with Rosenbauer was the, after we've taken the purchase, the service that we receive. We have annual service, or actually, twice a year, we get the service done, preventative maintenance, DOT inspections. We have a really good working relationship with the service vendor through Frontline and Freeland, as well as they serviced our other trucks prior to this. So it's a continued, and having the same brand really helps out with the maintenance. As far as the setup on the truck, it'll be very similar to the tower. The cab will look the same, and the location of levers and buttons in the cab will be the same as well for the driver to be not trying to find something, it'll be pretty simple.
That's important, in a stressful situation. Well, it sounds like you've take, I'm sorry, did you have more to add?
No.
It sounds like you've taken a very pragmatic approach to this and have really looked at everything. The maintenance costs alone, I think that's a significant factor as well. And the fact that there was the fire on the fire truck, and not having that phone contact is also critical. So, you know, you assembled a panel of experts to look at the various fire trucks that were available to us. And I defer to your expertise on that, and I believe you've made a good choice. I'll open this up if council has any questions or comments.
I just have one question. It will fit in the current garage, or?
Did we check that?
It's the same length.
As our current. That was a joke. Just like we knew the tower wouldn't fit before we bought it.
If I could just add, while the fire engine has been budgeted through the city's capital improvement plan and the proposed three-year budget, the expenses are actually budgeted between two payments in the next two fiscal years. So those are fiscal years '26, '27, and fiscal years '27, '28. There is no expense budgeted in the current fiscal year, so this, the one that just started 20 days ago. City council formally adopts a budget for one fiscal year. So while we have a three-year budget, the formal adoption is for one, for one year. That's all the state will allow us to actually formally adopt. So what you do is you accept the, basically the estimates for the two years out. So the appropriate time for us to address this 6% increase, so that we budgeted 1.1 million, this additional 70,000, the appropriate time to address that will be when we go into the budget process for next year, for '26, '27, when you're adopting '26, '27, and that's when we will have the discussion of the increase. Obviously, tonight, as you are approving the purchase order, you're approving the $70,000 additional, but the formal adoption of this year's budget is not affected. It's next year's budget that's affected. So this will be addressed when we, when we go into budget sessions next year, or next April.
Thank you for clearing up that confusion. And it's, I always appreciate when people can be informed and have, have all the accurate factual information when making these determinations. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a, just a comment more than anything else. I appreciate the note you made towards the end there about how the buttons are kind of in the same place. Because one of the things I usually like to ask about is the amount of training that's required for the team. And it sounds like that thought has been added into this decision-making process as well. So kudos on that, and hopefully we won't push the self-destruct button, you know, anything like that, so.
Never touch the red button.
No, don't touch the red button. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, public comment on this agenda item. Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M, sorry, M5825.
Hennan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M5925. Matter of approving an application for transfer of a Class C liquor license for Slow's Berkeley LLC, 3087 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M5925?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson.
Support.
With support from Council, Councilmember Black. Ms. Van Vleek.
I'm going to ask City Clerk Victoria Mitchell to handle it.
All right.
Yes, good evening. Slow's Berkeley LLC is before you this evening for local approval of a Class C liquor license transfer. As the motion states, Slow's is opening its new location at 3087 12 Mile Road. The clerk's office did circulate the application and received unanimous approval from all applicable staff. We do have representatives from Slow's here this evening. We have Mr. Terry Perone and Mr. Josh Keeler, who are here to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Gentlemen, would you like to tell us anything?
We're excited to be here.
Well, I mean, so we're excited that you're here.
Yeah, we didn't bring any food.
All right, get out.
Next time, next time. No, we're, we're meeting with our construction crew tomorrow to kind of get them hitting the gas so we can get this thing open as quickly as possible. But we're just excited to be here. And building's in great shape, and we just need to make it look like Slow's and make it smell like Slow's.
That'll be the easy part.
Right, yep.
Well, we're really thrilled that you're here in Berkeley, and we can't wait, you know, till you open. But I'm going to open this up to questions from council, and so don't go anywhere in the event they have questions. Councilmember Hennan.
Yeah, first, just I'm glad you're coming, and I can't tell you how excited I'm hearing from other people that you're coming. Do you have an idea when you might be opening?
We're targeting, well, as early in September as we can. But with any opening, that could mean anything from the middle of the month to sliding into very early October. Our goal is, though, September. We really, really would like to be open. What, we said fall, we'd like to hit fall. That's pretty important to us.
And not for the applicants, but just for us to consider, it seems that we're even hearing this as a legacy of a state ordinance that, you know, was repealed 13 years ago, and is, but is still in our books to do. And, you know, it, we're here just to stamp it, pretty much, and it slows things down. So I think we'd want to look at repealing this from our own books, just to keep things moving forward.
Good suggestion. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. Like my colleague, just expressions of appreciation and gratitude. I too hear lots of positive things. I know tonight is about the Class C liquor license, and so we look forward to learning more about your thoughts for the second floor and the degree to which you can activate that for public events. Is there any initial thinking you can share at this point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I handle all the off-site catering for our company. And we do events anywhere from 50 to thousands and thousands of people in a day. I'm excited just at that space, because I know that it's kind of the sweet spot in terms of the amount of people that we can get in that room comfortably, and kind of like the exclusivity of that room. The location of the building itself, I think, helps in a lot of ways. We're looking at engaging the community with events up there, local businesses, certainly Corwell Health, getting, you know, hopefully some medical professionals up there to do some sort of training programs, stuff like that. These are things that we're talking about, kicking around. So yeah, definitely private events up there, and also community events, whatever we can do. I mean, I'm, I look at it like I'm hoping that we can embrace the community to the point where we're seeing, like, sports teams, banquets up there, you know, and working with them to keep them on a budget that makes it friendly for them. You know, we offer friends and family discount for certain, certain criteria for our other locations. And that's something that we're looking at establishing for this location as well.
That sounds great.
Yeah, it really should be. And I think similar to the way Katie and Terry used it when they operated Berkeley Common, they had a lot of private events up there, and they just haven't tailored me. I mean, it is really teed up for us to really be able to have that opportunity to operate downstairs while at the same time having a completely different event upstairs. And having both of those happen at the same time. The beautiful thing about our business is we have slows to go. We have a commissary kitchen that's just sitting there on Cass. So for us to be able to come in and make people happy, we can do it.
Excellent. Councilmember Black.
Will you all be offering any discounts for military and military contractors?
As a matter of fact, we will. We will, just as we do at our Detroit locations, yes.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment.
Well, as a parent, a pastor, and a resident near Berkeley, we're just ecstatic.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're all pretty excited about this. I know you guys are, and we would mirror that excitement, if not more. So thank you so much for choosing Berkeley. I think you add a lot to the downtown. Having you there will be incredible. And so we're just really, really looking forward to your opening, and thanks for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for walking us.
Good to meet you, too. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M5925.
Patterson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black. Gavin.
Yes.
Hennan.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M6025. Matter of approving the employment contract for the Downtown Development Authority Director.
Is there a motion to approve M6025?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
With support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Ms. Van Vleek.
Good evening. I'm excited for this one. So I will start with the resignation of Mike McGinnis, which I think we were all sad to see him leave. In February of this year, left a vacancy in the position that has been filled temporarily by Jennifer Finney, our interim director. She was not able to be here tonight. She was planning on it, was not able to. We've been incredibly lucky to have Jennifer during this time of transition, as she brought stability, experience, and institutional knowledge to the role. During her short time, she has helped the board navigate a number of things, including the next fiscal year budget. The DDA Organizational Committee, with the help of the city's Human Resources Director, Jessica Stover, led a search for the next director that started in January of this year. Interviews were conducted and a selection was made. While the selection was made earlier this year, the applicant was not available until August, and he was worth waiting for, so the contract approval was put on hold until this month. So I'm happy to finally announce that the Organizational Committee chose to recommend Nate Mack as our next director. Nate Mack as our next director. We brought the recommended, recommended contract to the DDA Board on July 9th, and it was approved unanimously. Nate comes to us most recently from the city of South Lyon, where he has served as the DDA Executive Director and the Economic Development Director for the past five years. Nate, if I get any of this wrong, you can come up and negate it. Prior to that, he, he served as the Development Coordinator for the Michigan Theater of Jackson and the Executive Director for the Jackson DDA. Nate is a certified farmer's market manager. He, he holds a professional downtown management certificate, and he sits on several boards and committees, including the Michigan Downtown Association Board of Directors. With a wealth of experience and knowledge, I'm excited to see what Nate has to bring to this role. While the Downtown Development Authority Director is overseen by the DDA Board, and they are responsible for carrying out the goals of the Board, the position is employed by the city and operates as part of the merit system. The DDA budget reimburses the city's general fund for all costs associated with, associated with the position's employment. So while it's been, while his contract's been approved by the DDA, it still needs your approval as well. So with that, I'll introduce Nate Mack. Would you like to say a few words to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Crystal. Yeah, Nate Mack. I'm very excited to come to Berkeley and be the next DDA Director. I knew Mike through the Main Street Oakland County Program, so I got to speak with him a few times, got to know him a little bit. He never had a bad thing to say about being here. He's always smiling, great guy. But I do want to say a special thank you to Crystal, Jennifer, and Jessica for all their help over the last few months, getting things in place and waiting for me to be ready to come here. But I'm extremely excited to start working here, very excited about Slow's. Love barbecue, so. But yeah, I'm just happy to have this opportunity, happy to be here, and I'm excited to get started.
Excellent. We're very excited to have you here. Any questions or comments from council?
Just welcome. Welcome to Berkeley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nate, so you, obviously you have a very robust economic development background. Can you expound on that a little bit more and let, let the residents know exactly, or hopefully what we can be expecting to from, from your employment?
Yeah, so a lot of, I mean, I've spent the last 10 years working as a DDA Director. So my, my main focus and my expertise is downtowns. I've managed multiple different facade programs, I've altered facade programs, I've instituted sign incentive programs, mural programs. I know Berkeley has a lot of that stuff already. However, I'm pretty comfortable in that world. Looking at the Main Street approach, I'm very familiar with that, with the four points of the Main Street approach. Serving on the Michigan Downtown Association Board of Directors, I'm also the co-chair of the Legislative Advocacy Committee, so I'm pretty up on what's happening in Lansing. We do have a lobbying firm that we've retained, and they share a lot of information with us, so hopefully I'll be able to share that with everyone else in Berkeley as well. But yeah, a lot of downtown economic development activity I've done over the course of my career, so.
That's great. Well, really excited to have you, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Councilmember Baker. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for, for choosing Berkeley for your next home, and love to see you here for quite a while. I had the pleasure of attending the, that DDA meeting where you were introduced and approved through the Board, and very thankful for their leadership and support in making all this happen. Of course, as mentioned, to our interim DDA Director, Jennifer Finney did a great job, and I appreciate her help with you as the transition here. As you've, as you're learning how to spell Berkeley and kind of figure things out and all that, what are some initial impressions of things that you're excited about and some opportunities that you look forward to tackling?
Yeah, so I mean, I just get like, kind of when you come to a community, you kind of get a vibe, like, just like a gut instinct. And coming into Berkeley, I feel like it's a community where people like being here. They, the people that live here like living here, the people are kind of excited about calling Berkeley home. And actually, South Lyon City Attorney Lisa Hamame, I believe she's on the Planning Commission, I was talking to her about Berkeley, not informing her that I was going to be the new director here, but I was just, you know, asking her about, about the community, what she likes about it, and she's like, I just love everything about living in Berkeley. And so, you know, coming in knowing that a lot of people here, and everybody has been very welcoming to me, very helpful, Jennifer and Jessica have been especially very helpful to me, very patient with me, I've had a lot of questions, so. But yeah, there's, there's some things with the DDA. I know that they just recently paused the facade program and the, there's one other program?
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market, yes. So both of those things, I've done a lot of work in, and yeah, I'm excited to start tackling those, those issues to try and, to try and make them better, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, just to piggyback on things that have been said, I am very interested in the economic development piece. I think that when previous DDA Directors, everybody left their mark in a really good way in Berkeley, and everyone brought a skill set, and I love when you see that unfolding in a business, in a downtown. We're building, I, in my opinion, building on the things that have been done previously, and so I'm grateful to Jennifer Finney for coming in and steering the ship during this interim time. She did a fabulous job, and she was very thoughtful about a lot of things. I do think, I've always thought that West 12 Mile needs some love, this is just my opinion, but I think that if we can, not exactly telling you what to do, but if we could kind of have a, an overlook there, we had Phil Cooley come from MML, Carolyn from SEMCOG, Murph from MML, and I had met Phil at MML, Dan Gilmarten introduced us, and I came back to City Manager and said, hey, can we have a, you know, walkabout on West 12? And so DDA came, and some council members came, and, and businesses that were directly affected there. And I just think, you know, when you gather people who want something to be different and who are positive, great things can happen. So I would love the opportunity. I'm sure City Manager will fill you in on that and to see what your thoughts are as well. Not that you don't have 100 other things to do, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose West 12 in this transition. So happy you're here. I love the skill set that you're bringing, and I think that a lot of it will be put to good use here in Berkeley. So welcome, Nate.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-6025.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
No.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-6125, matter of approving the BPSOA tentative agreement.
Is there a motion to approve M-6125?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Van Black.
Okay. This is another one I'm excited to be bringing to you guys tonight. We have been in negotiations over a new contract for several months now, as the existing contract expired June 30th. Through the guidance of our Labor Attorney, Brandon Fournier, we have come to a tentative agreement with BPSOA, otherwise known as Berkeley Patrol Officers. And this agreement has been brought to their membership, and it's been approved by their membership. I do want to say I'm extremely proud of both sides. Union representation included Mark Robinson, who is the union president, Evan Beauchamp, who's the vice president, Andrew Boering, secretary, JP Cormier as the Sergeant of Arms, and Paris Lining. They just did a really excellent job, as did our, the city's side, which included Deputy City Manager of Public Services Sean Young, our Human Resources Director Jessica Stover, and myself, along with our finance team. I believe both sides took a thoughtful, thoughtful approach that balanced our fiscal responsibilities and restrictions, as well as a fair benefit package to employees that I believe will keep us competitive throughout continued improvement and retainment of our employees. The specifics of the agreement can be found within the tentative agreement, which is in the packet, but I'll just roughly, highlights are, it is a three-year contract, which is pretty typical. Our last contract was three years as well. It includes three years of modest wage increases, but it also includes employee healthcare premium sharing. So up until now, most employees outside of our dispatch union, as they, they confirmed their agreement two years ago, most employees had not shared in the cost of healthcare premiums, and the terms of this agreement changes that arrangement. So going forward, there, there will be cost sharing on the, on the employee side. If you have any questions about the rest of it, I'm here to answer them, so is, so is Jessica, our Human Resources Director, but I recommend approval of the BPSOA tentative agreement.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Oh, Councilmember Henan.
I'll just comment, a very thorough job was done. I'm happy with where we landed. There's give and take on both sides, so I think this is where we need to be.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-6125.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-6225, matter of approving the MAPE tentative agreement and continuing the past practice of carrying the wage and healthcare terms of the MAPE contract to merit employees.
Is there a motion to approve M-6225?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Van Black.
Another, another contract that was on the same, the same timeline as BPSOA is our MAPE contract. So that is Michigan Association of Public Employees, and that, that contract covers most of the employees in our Department of Public Works. That contract also expired on June 30th, so we've been in negotiations for the past few months. Again, through the guidance of our Labor Attorney, Brandon Fournier, we've come to a tentative agreement with MAPE Union Representation that has been approved by their membership. Very similar to with Patrol, I'm just very proud of both sides. I think everybody came to the table respectfully. I think everyone understood where the other side was coming from, and treated, and both wanted to come to a very similar agreement, it's just kind of how, you know, how we get there. On the side of, the union representation on this side, I just want to give them a little bit of a, of a hooray, was Kenny Ozenich, Brian Lapine, and Stephen King, so those are all DPW employees of ours. They just did a wonderful job representing their, their membership. Again, I think both sides took a thoughtful approach. They, the terms will keep us competitive throughout the ongoing recruitment and retainment of, I have to say, our greatest asset, which is our employees. So it's very important, I think, that we keep that in mind throughout these negotiations. The specifics, again, can be found in the tentative agreement, which is in the packet, but the modest wage increases mirror Patrol, so the same package, as far as that goes. Same with mirroring in the BPSOA agreement, that, the sharing of the healthcare premium. So again, this is not something that employees have shared the cost of until, up until now. And there are several other things in that agreement, and again, I can answer any questions if you have them, but further, I'm recommending that we continue the past practice of carrying the wage and healthcare terms of the MAPE agreement contract to our, to our merit employees. Our merit employees are those not covered by a union agreement. Many of, like, are administrative in the past, and I've seen this done in other communities as well. Those employees tend to mirror another contract, and traditionally here it's been MAPE, and so I'm recommending the same. So they would take on the same wage increases, as well as the same healthcare shape, healthcare premium sharing.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Same type of comments as the last one, generally just to appreciate the work and the partnership that went into both this and the prior contract, you know, from union leadership and also administration and staff, working together with the common interest of putting Berkeley first and, and understanding and working together. It's not a zero-sum game. I love the way that we approach these kinds of things. I appreciate that contract negotiations, as you mentioned, put, put the people first to make sure that we're all taking a positive step forward. So I'm real excited about this. Thank you for, for your excellent work, too, in making all this happen, and I'm very, very happy with how this has worked out on both of these accounts.
I was very happy to have Jessica here for these.
Councilmember Black, you good?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-6225?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Okay, here we are at Communications. Ms. Mitchell, who will go first?
Councilmember Henan.
Great.
Right, the tree board are on their summer hiatus, but meanwhile, you can sign up at no cost for street trees, that's still available. 100 of the 200 have been claimed, but they won't last long, so contact DPW, or you can sign up at BerkeleyMI.gov/forestry. The zoning Board of Appeals finally got to meet. Their first case was a property on Coolidge between Earlmont and Edgewood that has no parking spaces. There was a request for small retail store and upstairs office. The variance was granted with the condition that the employees park either in the municipal lot here by the building, the city hall building, or at Bagger Days, where they have a shared parking agreement. Then the mug and jug gas station also had their variance requests. Both were approved, one for a trash enclosure and one keeping the second existing driveway onto 12 Mile. They held elections for officers. Sue McAlpine was re-elected as chair, and Andrew Creole was elected as vice chair, and then they will have one case to hear next month. And then on Thursday last week, I was able to, the Michigan Department of Civil Rights held a summit on AI use, artificial intelligence use, and policy in local government. I was invited as a panelist for one of the discussions, and besides being able to share my knowledge, I learned a great deal that will be of practical use for us here in Berkeley. So that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Historical Committee met on Tuesday, July 8th. Preparations continue for a historic cemetery tour at Roslyn coming up on October 18th. Howl of the ornaments, their sales are brisk, and especially at only $5 each, they are going fast. So if you'd like to get, get another one for yourself, or to, to share with friends and family, please do so. I'd like to thank the, the committee volunteers who put in a lot of sweat and labor during the, the Art Bash, the Pride Block Party, and the Street Art Fest. They have no meeting in, in August, but our city history lives on. Please visit the museum or their website, which is BerkeleyHistory.com. The very next day, our Downtown Development Authority met on Wednesday, the 9th. As was mentioned, congratulations to Nate. Welcome, we welcome your experience and energy and leadership to this team. And again, thank you to Jennifer Finney for all that she did in her first tenure as a DDA Director for us, and then coming back on an interim basis to help keep things moving forward and positioning us well for further success. So thank you to her and the whole team there. Hooray for the amazing Dorothea Pocket Park pilot. I'm sure we'll hear more about that in a little bit, and we continue to welcome your feedback on how we can make that place even more exciting and fun in the months and weeks and months, and hopefully years and years and years to come. And they also had discussions about the Robina placemaking initiatives and lighting up up the marquee for the Berkeley Cruise Fest, so that'll be fantastic. For that and more information, please visit DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was Joseph Joubert who once said, "Children are great imitators, so give them something great to imitate." Now today happens to be National Be Someone Day. National Be Someone Day challenges each of us to take even just 10 seconds to positively impact a child's life. Whether you're a parent, or a mentor, or a neighbor, or a colleague, your actions really matter. Consider how you can help a child, or someone caring for a child. Offer to babysit for a stressed parent, donate school supplies, volunteer with a youth organization, or simply listen to what they have to say. Every small act of kindness really matters. It's important that together we can build a place, and Berkeley certainly exemplifies this, where every child knows that they matter, feels safer, and feels supported. We all have the power to be someone who makes a difference. And finally, please make sure you hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. For Parks and Rec, the Bacon Jamboree is July 24th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at Bacon Park. If you have any questions, you can call 248-658-3470 or email parks@berkleymi.gov. And the next meeting of the Advisory Board will be August 7th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And then for the library, just to echo my colleagues' comments, thanks to everyone who came out and attended programming and events at the Dorothea Pocket Park, where both library and Parks and Rec had great programming, and everybody that went in to make it such a smashing success. So thank you very much. And then the next meeting of the Library Advisory Board will be the 20th of August at 7:00 PM at the library. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. The Planning Commission for this week will not meet. They didn't have a quorum, so they canceled that meeting. There wasn't much on the agenda. It was more administrative stuff, so I'm sure that'll be on the next meeting. And the Beautification Committee will meet on Wednesday at 6:30 here in Public Safety, and I just want to thank you for inviting me to your Mayor's Roadshow. I called the wrong thing. Mayor's Roadshow at the Rhine. It was great to meet with some of our residents and new business owners, so thank you for that invite.
You're welcome. It was fun to have you there. Councilmember Black?
Regarding the committee for engagement and transparency, I just want to give another thank you to City Manager and City Clerk and everyone behind the scenes who works hard to make this possible for me. Cannot tell you all where I am, but I guarantee you, it is no place you all want to be. These are long days, and they are obviously even longer when I do these, so I'm not having to worry about the setup. Just, it makes my life a lot easier. So just a huge thank you to the staff for continuing to make this possible.
I do want to expand a little bit on Dorothea, and I know the mayor, you're going to think about it a little bit, but I do have some insight into, we've had a survey out there, and we will continue to have that available, and we may tweak it a little bit to ask more for what you'd like to see there in the future, et cetera. And so we're looking at different ways to share that, including keeping the sandwich board there, wonderful idea, that will take everybody to a survey they can still continue to participate in. And we will have a presentation in an upcoming meeting about kind of what happened, what we did, and how it was received. We have some great footage, too, I think will be fun to share with the public. But just a really quick, some things that I found interesting of the responses to the survey, and I apologize because I don't offhand have the number, but 53% of the respondents to the survey were people who attended a specific event, but 46% were who, I'm sorry, 46% of the respondents were people who did not necessarily go to a specific event. So they just found themselves there one day. We were hoping and assuming that that's how people would really like to interact with that space, is just somewhere, as they are downtown, they find a place to sit and relax, and hopefully navigate around some of the businesses that they would not have originally gone to even. But I would say overwhelmingly, we had great feedback on it. People were very satisfied with the park. They responded that they were likely to come again, and we also asked things about parking, and whether they would like to see it as a permanent space. So we were really trying to receive some information that would help us in giving this all the back to you when the decisions are being made about what we do with this in the future, so, and how we can do it the best. So we do anticipate seeing this again, and we'll come and talk to you guys more about when we'd like to see that. I think the natural is during bootlegging and doing something during that time, but we'll come back to you with an idea for how we can partner with the DDA or anyone else on something like that. But all in all, we had a lot of wonderful events. It is outside, so there were quite a few that had to, the weather did not want to cooperate a lot with us, but alas, we're in Michigan in summertime, so that just kind of happens. But I would say overall, I think it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of, it was great seeing community, and I know you want to talk about it more, so I'm gonna-
No, you're good.
Let you. But it was just, I think it was a great, I think it was a great project in partnership with community members and the different departments. Everybody, there were so many people, so many city staff that came together to make this happen, and then also so many people from the outside. So whether it was DDA members or other community members, so it was just really fun to see that come together that way. And that's all.
Thank you. Attorney Crist?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. So yes, to continue the Dorothea Pocket Park activation conversation, I just wanted to thank some people. First of all, our Community Development Director, Kristin Kapalansky, who applied for the grant from SEMCOG. It was a planning grant, and that's how this came to be. But it wasn't by accident. This was part of the master plan. This space on Dorothea was identified in our master plan, which has robust engagement from residents and community members. So the space was kind of identified, and then this planning grant came in, and Director Kapalansky not only applied for it, but she also was responsible for the reporting requirements. And if anyone has applied for a grant or had to administer a grant, it's, there's no such thing as free money. There are always things that if you're receiving the money, that you have to do, and we are grateful to do it. But this, you don't just go, okay, we have the check, we're good. So again, thanks to Community Development Director Kapalansky for taking that on and doing the reporting requirements. Our Parks and Recreation Department, our Downtown Development Authority, Department of Public Services, the businesses, residents who came to meetings and who gave their input about how the space should be activated. I'm sure I've left someone out, so I apologize if I didn't mention you and you were there. But I truly believe that this was a collaborative effort, and it brought joy to me to be in attendance at the meetings and to just see, truly see the community working together with each other, businesses and residents and city departments. And that's the way it should be, quite frankly, in my opinion. I think that the space was activated thoughtfully, and what I liked to see is that there were programs for all ages and all different interests. And I like seeing the space being utilized even when there was no programming, and I think that that really speaks to how the space is now becoming identified. I do look forward to having a boss district on Coolidge, because, you know, leave it to the mayor to be like, wouldn't it be great if we could walk across the street with our margaritas? So maybe that's in our future as well in Coolidge. I think it probably is. And as City Manager Van Vleek mentioned, we will be having a presentation with some drone footage and of the events, and I did not, I almost left with a puppy, but then I came to my senses. They had adoptable dogs. But yeah, you know, I have a crazy dog at home, plus a husband who takes a lot of my energy. So I was like, I'm gonna just leave the puppy. It was a good decision. I would like to thank Senator Gary Peters for including $385,000 toward our new fire truck in the proposed Senate budget. We can't get too excited because the budget hasn't passed yet, but I am hopeful and I am just grateful that it was recognized as a need in Berkeley that they could help us with. As Councilmember Patterson said, I was at the Mongers on the Rhine for Meet Your Mayor last Wednesday night, and it was nice to have you join me there. But the best thing about Meet Your Mayor is really interacting with residents and visitors to Berkeley, because these are very informal. People know where I'm going to be and what time, and I about fell over when someone said, "We made dinner reservations because you were going to be here tonight." Mostly that doesn't happen, but it's, I am always available, whether you come to one of these or just pick up the phone and call me. I had great conversations with people that live here. The residents that live in Berkeley, they love it here, and there's a lot to love. There's so much going for us in our community. People that come to visit Berkeley, I consistently hear, "We love shopping and dining in Berkeley." We wanted to buy a house in Berkeley, but we couldn't. We looked high and low, and we just couldn't get a house in Berkeley. So even people that don't live here secretly want to, and they come to Berkeley, and they enjoy all the things that we have to offer. People are happy. People love their community. So if you're ever in doubt, I just want you to know, we have a great community, and we have much to be proud of. So I will let you know when my next stop on the Mayor's Roadshow is via Instagram and Facebook, and until then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black? Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, July 21st, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.